Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Federal Way City Council for October 7th of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the written text of justice for all.
All right, welcome. We're here for a special study session and we have a representative from King County, Ryra 9, Planning and Technical Coordinator, Matt Gering. Matt, welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And first off, I just want to thank Mayor, members of councils for passing the 10-year extension of the Ryra 9 ILA. So, a lot of good work happening and excited for what the next 10 years can bring for this watershed. So, just a quick outline, give you a little background on the salmon recovery framework, overview of the salmon habitat plan, some quick review of funding and accomplishments, and then some local context for you to consider moving forward in the next 10 years. So, this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone in terms of the long-term decline of Puget Sound Chinook. That culminated with the listing of Puget Sound Chinook in 1999 under the Federal Endangered Species Act. That population continued to decline and basically hit an all-time low of less than 200 fish around 2009. So, we've since, if you look closely at that upper graph, we've since stabilized and are, you know, regularly in the 3,000 to 5,000 range, but much below the recovery target set of 27,000 by the NOAA Fisheries. So, in terms of the watershed, there's 17 local governments that participate in the watershed. You can see generally we're a pretty urbanized watershed on the lower end, but then the upper watershed is largely commercial forestry and preserved land. One thing I like to always highlight about our watershed is, you know, 1/8 of the state's GDP comes from the lower portion of our watershed. So, an economic powerhouse, but not only an economic powerhouse, we're also regularly in the top three producers of Chinook salmon in Puget Sound. So, pretty impressive, something that people don't necessarily associate with the Green Duwamish. So, just providing that context.
And Matt, can I interrupt you just for a moment? I'm sorry, I forgot to excuse our colleague here on the council. And the reason why we're having this briefing, it was done at her request, Councilmember Assefa Dawson. She's, her appearance is excused for this meeting. Thank you so much.
No worries. And so, that's a good segue to this slide in terms of the watershed ecosystem forum. So, the watershed ecosystem forum is our governing body. That's who makes decisions on behalf of the watershed, and Councilmember Assefa Dawson sits on that board. She has for longer than I've been a member of the Rya. So, in terms of forum decision-making, they really are tasked with implementation and adaptive management of our salmon plan. Like I said, they are that governing body in terms of making funding recommendations and approving our annual work plan. And this photo's often, you know, I often say, we really need to update the photo. We don't, this is largely outdated. I had more hair, that's nice, but looking for an updated photo this year. So, in terms of the salmon habitat plan, I was in front of this body in 2001 to approve the update, the first comprehensive update to the original 2005 plan. That's this 2021 update. It contains a updated status assessment. It's a kind of refresh of best available science. We've learned a lot in the 20 years. So, that was kind of a rehash of what have we learned and where should we go next, developing habitat goals, and updating our recovery strategies, and then most importantly, kind of refreshing our capital project list. This plan now has over 100 capital projects across the watershed that we look forward to implementing and working with all of our partners in implementing. So, just a snapshot in 2025, our funding, we have the ILA, which has a funding instrument that produces about $600,000 annually for the Rya, and about 5.5% of that, or $32,000, comes from Federal Way. And that, just so you understand, the cost share is based on the average of the percent population, the assessed value and land area within the total watershed. And then on top of that, we have grant funding. We get about $4.2 million from the Flood Control District, about $1.1 million from the Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Program, that's a state program, and then $300,000 annually from the State Recovery Funding Board. So, in terms of what have we, we've done, we've actually leveraged over $200 million of investment in the watershed. This has helped support 3.5 miles of levee setbacks. We've been able to revegetate over 500 acres of forest land. We've been able to conserve four and a half miles of marine shoreline and been able to remove about one mile of shoreline armor. And then we've also jump-started a successful stewardship engagement and learning program. These are the programs that bring kids, youth, out into the watershed, get them exposure, education, and help build that kind of next generation of stewards in our watershed. And shown here is just a snapshot before-after of Seahurst Park in Burien. That was one of the largest, even remains one of the largest shoreline restoration projects in Puget Sound. So, in terms of what, why Federal Way, right? Well, Federal Way lies within our marine nearshore watershed, right? The Chinook salmon are going up the Green Duwamish. Federal Way doesn't lie on the Green Duwamish, but the marine waters off of Federal Way serve as that nursery for juvenile salmon as they come out of the Green Duwamish. They also, it also supports production of forage fish, surf smelt, sand lance, that become the prey items for adult Chinook. And then finally, feeder bluffs that provide sediment to help restore, help drive beach processes, support healthy eelgrass beds along the shoreline. So, in terms of what have we done here, Camp Kilworth was an investment by Rya 9, about $600,000 went to that acquisition for a 29-acre property, has unarmored feeder bluff, supports forage fish habitat, eelgrass, extensive eelgrass beds, really cool YMCA summer camp program. I think some of you have been out there for the grand opening, but really awesome. Then we've got the Rotary Lodge and the Amphitheater, which are recognized historical sites. And then, you know, in terms of looking forward in the next 10 years, you know, I'll just highlight, we've been working with some of our partners to identify potential future projects. We look forward to working with Federal Way on that. You know, there may be an opportunity down the road. There's a failing bulkhead at Dumas Bay Center. Is there an opportunity there to restore the shoreline, to kind of improve not only salmon habitat there, but public access? Like you saw there, kind of removing the bulkhead, removing riprap could be more, you know, recreational-oriented, better access for the community down to the water. And then other areas, when you think of climate change, sea level rise, eroding shorelines, you know, Normandy Park's a good example. They've recently approved an acquisition strategy for those vulnerable shoreline properties, and just this year, they were able to get over $3 million of funding to support acquisition on a voluntary basis from landowners. So, really just wanted to highlight those as potential opportunities within this jurisdiction and happy to work with Councilmember Assefa Dawson and your staff as needed moving forward on those. And so, with that, I'll just open it up to you if there's any questions. I always say, you know, you said King County. Yes, we're administratively housed in King County, but we really are jointly supported by all 17 local governments. So, I like to think of myself as, we support everyone. We're the staff of every jurisdiction that supports this ILA. So, thank you for your continued support.
Very good. And thank you for your work. Counsel, any questions? Councilman McDaniel.
Yeah, the only question I have is, it says salmon on it, but you had mentioned quite a bit of other things. Is it just kind of pretty much the umbrella is salmon, but it looks like you do a lot more for water and the waterways and just that kind of area?
Salmon is our driving factor, so we prioritize projects based on Chinook salmon. But obviously, within a heavily developed watershed, we need to achieve multiple benefits with all of our projects, whether that's, you know, open space preservation, recreation, water quality improvements, you know, flood protection. A lot of our projects are, you know, providing real measurable flood benefits up and down the watershed.
Gotcha. And then I noticed you were looking to, the number of salmon is actually kind of your metrics you guys are looking at, so like that. Is there, do you guys see a possibility of hitting those metrics, or is there going to be, need to be a recalibration of what we're looking for?
You know, that's, that's a fantastic question. I think the 27,000 that was set back in 2001, that's probably a very aspirational goal. I think if we could get in the, you know, regularly in the 5,000 to 10,000 of wild fish, we'd be in a good spot. And you've probably heard the publicity around Howard Hansen Dam. Well, that's 200 miles of good high-quality fish habitat if we can get that fish passage facility up and running. So, that's been a cornerstone of our salmon recovery plan and still is to this day. I think we all just thought it was going to happen about 10 years ago.
Gotcha. My last question is, when you guys count the salmon, is there certain areas or is it more like, how do you guys, how do you even count the salmon that's?
Yeah, so Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Munkashtu Indian Tribe do spawning surveys. So, spawning generally occurs from Auburn upstream to Howard Hansen Dam, and so they do a combination of foot, boat, rafts, and even sometimes helicopter surveys.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Speaking of the Howard Hansen Dam, what is that, any update on that? I remember, I first became a Ryra 9 when I took a trip up to the Howard Hansen Dam when they had the, the issues with that before the curtain was put in, the cement curtain. Any update on Howard Hansen Dam?
Yeah, so, you know, there was about $250 million that were appropriated to support fish passage. The Army Corps is moving forward with design. They have a design-build contract. Obviously, the remaining funding didn't get put in the Corps work plan for this year. So, there's a lot of negotiation going on. Senator Murray has been a champion of this effort. So, you know, fingers crossed. It's obviously a difficult environment out in DC right now, but there's still a lot of work going on to try to secure that.
Yeah, I don't think people realize that the scope of the infrastructure that Ryra 9 is responsible for in the watershed and it's, it's, it's really something else. And speaking of which, the reason why we're here today, to hear the briefing from you, looks like Councilmember Assefa Dawson has actually joined us remotely. Councilmember Assefa Dawson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm sorry, I missed part of it, but thank you so much for being here and for updating us because what you're doing is great and I appreciate the hard work that you and your staff put into this. And so, coming and briefing us and also supporting the effort is great. We appreciate it. So, thank you for being here and sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm glad to see you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for your support. All right, Counsel, any, oh, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I have a question. You showed the picture of the bulkhead that was taken down and what the, the beach looks like now. I mean, how did that happen and how much time? Are you, that's something you had on the map you were proposing by Dumas Bay Center also, or just on the wish list somewhere?
That's a concept, right? Just looking at, hey, where do we have public ownership? There's another area we've been working on at Seahurst State Park. So, it's where do we have public ownership and a significant stretch that has a bulkhead that, you know, you have enough space to potentially play with, right? If the center was right up on the water, you're not going to touch, well, you probably would touch the bulkhead, you'd reinforce it, right, to protect the center. But given how far back it is, there might be an opportunity. So, these, these things, these projects take decades, to be honest. They go from, okay, it's a concept, then we have to do a feasibility study, is it possible? Then we have to go get funding, political support, and move from there. So.
How long did that one project take?
That was done in two phases, one in 2007, the other in 2013, and it probably started a decade before that. So, you know, you're talking 15, 20 years to get, that was almost a mile of shoreline.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody remembers, but when the Howard Hansen Dam was in jeopardy, the entire valley, the Kent, Auburn, Green River Valley was under threat of flooding. And I was at the King County Prosecutors at the time, and I used to attend these briefings from all the different, you know, governments, and there were plans to have people, if that dam had failed, to quote, "shelter in place," which means if you were at the King County Regional Justice Center, you would stay there and stay in your building and hide, and some of the, it would have been, would have been a big deal. Were you with the, you were with the?
I wasn't. No, I wasn't. I was at the state back then.
Ah, very good. Yeah, it was very, very interesting. Okay, Counsel, any other questions? Not that I'm.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much for coming, and thank you so much for the work you and your colleagues do every day for all of us. All right, Counsel, anything else before we, I think we've got the advisory body interviews, the Youth Commission interviews, Planning Commission interviews. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Council President Coach Mark.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, we'll start with the Youth Commission interviews. We have two people.
Council President, if I may briefly interrupt. We do have two additional candidates who arrived today due to miscommunication. We did expect them at the last meeting. However, due to scheduling conflicts, they weren't able to attend. So, this evening, Jaden Marzan and Justin Sin are with us for council's consideration to interview them this evening as well.
So, were they both from TJ?
I believe Decatur High School.
So, so we have four from Decatur this evening?
That's correct.
All right. Well, then, let's, let's start with Jaden then, from who was supposed to be at the last meeting.
Did you send us their information? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome, Jaden. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and what year you are in school and what you would like to do on the Youth Commission?
Yeah, so my name's Jaden Marzan, if you don't already know my name. I'm a junior currently at Decatur High School. And just to give you guys a little snapshot on my background, currently I'm a member of my ASB, Associated Student Body at my school, so I'm ASB secretary. On top of that, I'm also an executive officer for DECA, if you guys don't know what that is. It's a marketing and business club. For that club, I am the VP of Hospitality, and I am a former Key Club Secretary, which is a community service club.
Well, I, I think our Councilmember Honda would like to ask you about Key Club. Is that right?
I'm just glad you're a part of Key Club.
If you guys want a little more about Key Club, in my past years, I've helped organize a couple of events for that, and me and my fellow officer over there, Diana, we used to be Key Club officers, but we try to boost membership and, you know, we try to make the community service events for our members fund and kind of give them incentives for them to participate. And that's kind of our way of trying to boost our membership in that club.
So, Jaden, you said you were a senior?
A junior, sorry.
Junior, that's okay. And you're on the ASB?
Yeah.
Counsel, are there any questions?
I could go more into ASB if you guys would like.
Let's, do you have any questions, Counsel? Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, tell me about your, you assisted with imaging 10,000 computers.
Yeah.
I mean, what did the day look like and?
So, over the summer, I did the Federal Way Public Schools internship over at the ESC. You guys know where that's at, but I worked with the Information Technology Services over there. And this summer was a really big project. They told us it was one of their biggest projects yet. We had to reimagine, like, a bunch of computers over at the high schools since their contract with Windows 10 is coming to an end. We had to update those machines from Windows 10 to Windows 11. And that whole project, that included us going onsite, which gave me a lot of great experience going onsite and, you know, getting hands-on experience, especially with hardware and machines. And I kind of have a background in that already. So, I think that doing that internship kind of helped supplement me and kind of give me more experience on the things that I'm interested in. On top of that, technology internship, I'm also a mentor for my AP Computer Science Principles class at Decatur High School. So, I kind of help my teacher explain complex concepts to the students, and I think that kind of relates to what Youth Commission does because, you know, you guys kind of have to listen to other people's perspectives and understand where people are coming from. And I think with the skill set that I have, I think that I'd be a perfect addition to the Youth Commission.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. So, you speak three languages?
Yeah.
And are those languages spoken at home? Is that how?
Sorry?
Are they spoken at home?
So, for Spanish, that was kind of just for school, for, to get the credit, but English is my first language, and the language that I speak at home with my parents and my grandparents is Tagalog, and I'm fluent in that.
Awesome. Thank you for being a member of Key Club. I'm the Key Club Advisor for Federal Way High School.
Oh, nice.
So, I appreciate that you're in Key Club. It's a great place to be. And what are your plans after high school?
After high school, I plan to go to college. I'm thinking of staying in-state due to the fact that, you know, it's cheaper and it's much more convenient for me. But I'm looking to major in informatics and kind of specialize in cybersecurity, which is why, like I stated previously, I think that internship really helped me find my passion because until recently, I wasn't really set on doing, I mean, I was set on doing technology, but I wasn't really set on doing cybersecurity. But I think that after doing that internship, it kind of opened my eyes and it kind of gave me a new perspective on what, on what technology can be. And yeah, I think, yeah, that my passion, cybersecurity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Councilmember McDaniel?
Thanks for coming in. A couple of quick questions. First one is, I asked everybody the same thing. What's your favorite book and why?
Favorite book? This is an old one, but my favorite book is To Kill a Mockingbird. You guys know that one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You guys want me to go into like a little bit why?
You, the reason why you like it, yes?
Yeah. So, I think some of the key themes in To Kill a Mockingbird are, you know, justice and integrity. And one of the things that stood out to me in that book is Atticus Finch teaching his children to, you know, look at different perspectives before judging people. And I think that can kind of apply to me and, you know, what I do in my everyday life as an executive officer for all these so many, for these so many different clubs and activities. Because you always have to, you always have to look at other people's perspectives. Leading, being a leader is not just about leading, but you also have to listen. I feel like listening as a leader is more important than leading because you have to kind of work with people and see their perspective before, you know, going with your pride.
Right. And then my second question is more about the schools. What is something you think the schools should be better at and how would you want to adjust that or fix it?
I think one thing the schools can be better at is listening to student voices. And I think the way to get around that is, you know, there is ASB in place for, you know, so that there are student leaders who can talk to the, you know, adults. And I think that it kind of helps, but I think that's something that should be changed, is listening to student voices more.
Can you give me an example of a voice that's not being heard currently?
For example, at Decatur High School, I'm not sure if you guys know, but we have gates at lunch, and it doesn't really give us the ability to walk around during the school day. And we've been trying to tell, we've been trying to tell the admins, like, you know, we don't want to be stuck in the lunchroom the whole time. We want to, you know, have the ability to walk around, but they don't really do anything about it. They just, they just keep things the way they are.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you very much for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Cuantos años has estudiado español?
Sí.
Cuantos años?
Oh, cuantos años. Quince.
Quince. Bueno, muchos años. Bueno, muy bien. My, my wife's favorite book is To Kill a Mockingbird as well. Well, what do you think of the school's new policy on, on cellphones?
Cellphones? Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot, the cellphone policy, and I think that, you know, it is, it is understandable to take away cellphones, but my opinion on the cellphone policy, I don't really think that's the way to go about it. I think the way to go about it is, you know, taking it away if it's not being used for educational purposes because I think that technology, you know, is something that we can't avoid, something that we have to adapt to. And cellphones can be used as a tool. So, I think that taking cellphones away, if they're not being used for educational purposes, should be the way that we're going about it instead of just taking them away completely.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, Jaden, we, we will be talking about who's going to be appointed at the end of this meeting in the open public part, and then we will appoint at the next meeting, which starts at 6:30. So, you're welcome to stay, or you can watch on television, Channel 21, or you'll get a phone call tomorrow, anything you like. But, and by the way, thank you for explaining that you believe that a leader, the most important thing is to be a listener. I was just trying to tell my eight-year-old granddaughter how to be a leader, who seems to seek a lot of attention at eight years old, and I said, no, you won't be a leader. So, I'm going to pass that on to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You're welcome. So, now, let's see, we're going to have the next person who was, wasn't able to be at the last meeting. Oh goodness, was that, was that Diana?
Justin.
Thank you. Also from Decatur. Thank you very much. Just, you, go ahead and tell us what year you are in school and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Hello, my name is Justin Sin. I'm a junior currently at Decatur High School. And I'm also part of the ASB team. I'm the, I'm right now the Community Relations Officer for Decatur High School.
And can you tell us any more about yourself?
Oh, yeah. I'm also a student leader for, for a program called Kappa. I'm pretty sure they come here a lot to the city council for meetings, also for rewards and stuff, for volunteer hours. So, I'm also the student leader for that. I'm in clubs like DECA and Key Club, and I'm currently a RC tennis player for my school, Decatur High School.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, let's see, we have Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah, second question's going to be, first one is, again, what is your favorite book and why?
My favorite book is, well, I wouldn't say my, I don't really have a favorite book, but the most interesting is probably Persepolis. I read that my freshman year of high school, and it, it taught me like, a lot of like, things that are like important, like, like things that are important and some things that are like, like, it's like gifted to like have like, like you should be appreciative of having like what you have because you don't know what other people are going through in life, and yeah.
And then the second question is going to fall along the same lines, the last one again, is if you had something you could change in the school, what would it be and how would you do it?
Something I would change in the school would be probably, probably the, probably the phone policy, honestly. Like Jaden was saying earlier, I think the phones, it's a, it's a pretty like big thing in school. You could use it for educational purposes, but some people like to just use it for like other things, like social media, chatting with friends, which is like, it's not, it's obviously not like appropriate for school use. But I think like, in some cases, phones might be a great usage, like, for example, like emergency calls, calling your mom, like communicating with your family to see if they're doing well, or like if they ever give you a call during school. Because, because I had, I know some people that got their phones taken away just from taking it out, texting their mom. But by the school rules, you're not supposed to have it out in school at all times. So, they got their phones taken away, and it's, it seemed pretty unfair to them because like I know that they were good kids at the school, but they just get their phones taken away. But, yeah.
Is it taken away for the class or is it for the whole day to be?
Uh, for the whole day.
The whole day. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So, what are your plans after high school?
My plans after high school is attending a four-year university in the state of Washington. My, my goal is to go to UW to study informatics or computer science. Right now, I have two brothers that, that, so one's currently doing informatics at UW Seattle, and the other just graduated this year from computer science.
Oh, awesome. And if you get on the Youth Commission, what would you like to see the Commission do?
Um, probably like just make the community of Federal Way a better place overall.
Good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, how did you pick your email address?
Uh, oh, Jason 913?
Yeah, why did you put it down there, 913? I mean, why did you pick that one?
Um, my brother actually made that email address for me. I was, um, so I got my Xbox and I had to create an account. So, that was just the- um, that was just the email I used and now I just use it as my current main email.
Okay, and are, do you play doubles or singles? And if singles, what, 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 where are you at in this pecking order?
I play uh, singles, singles two.
Singles two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Justin, you're looking at a whole body of people who grew up their entire lives all through college without having a phone and somehow we survive. I just thought I'd let you know that. Some of us didn't even have TV when we were little.
Some of us still don't have TV.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
No, thank you for, thank you for your time.
Our computers, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Well, the first computer for me was as big as a room. That was the IBM. Uh, anyway, we're, we're taking you down a walk down memory lane.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much. And uh, we'll be, we'll be talking at the end of this meeting and then we'll appoint at the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for applying.
Is there uh, any more questions that you guys?
You're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Now we'll go to the two new folks. All four of these individuals are from Decatur. Uh, the first one on our list is Diana Lopez. Hi Diana. Go ahead, just.
Okay, my name is Diana Favella. I'm a senior at Decatur High School and I'm currently the Key Club president and also the historian for Native Gators.
We have our lady over here who's just loving all this Key Club.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead and tell us some more.
Okay, so I, I want to study architectural design. I've always had a very big like craving for building things because I think architecture is such a like major part of our society. And I think that like being in the youth commission can help me with that because not only like is the city like built by buildings, but also I think that I can help like just give ideas and also help our community.
Counsel, any, I know we've got a question about a book. Councilmember McDaniel?
Well, it's funny because someone actually copied up on the books too. It's interesting. So again, my question's gonna be the same one is uh, first, what is your favorite book and why?
Okay, my favorite book is called The Song of Achilles. It's about Greek mythology and it's my favorite book because it goes really deep into like a love story between Achilles and Patroclus. And it's kind of like fiction in the Greek mythology world and it just showed me a lot about how like deep connections are and how important they are to have in your life. And like it just helps me value a lot the people that I have around me.
Right. And then the second one again is gonna be on the schools. It says, what is something in the school you think should be modified or changed and why? Or how would you do it?
I think that the main thing is the school speed limit zone. Uh, we don't have one in high schools and I know that there was an incident, I think last year in Fed where a student got hit by a car. And I know for Decatur, like in my school personally, there's a very like long road where cars go really fast. So if we had like a school limit zone, it would be very helpful because the kids cross those streets like very often throughout the day.
You're talking on the three-twenty throughout the front of Decatur?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I agree with the speed limit for both those schools. So um, what are your plans for after high school?
Um, I really want to study, I want to make it into UW for architectural design and a minor in business analytics. But if not, I really wanted to study in Hawaii for environmental design, get my bachelor's in that because again, I want to go into like architecture and I also want to start my own firm so I can help with that. And I really, I really want to implement like the environment in my builds, like when I do grow up and like reach that success level that I re, want to reach. Because I think that the main thing that's important in our society as a whole is the environment because we work with it, we live with it and we're just like, it helps us just be who we are and like live our lives. So I really want to implement that in my life and I hopefully want to make it into UW.
Well, awesome. And uh, thank you for being in Key Club and being involved in your school. Thanks for being here tonight.
Uh, councilmember Doby?
Yeah, which graduate school do you want to go for in architecture?
Graduate school.
Cause you said you wanted to have a master's in it, correct?
Uh, a bachelor's of environmental design if I make it into Hawaii school because I want to study in University of Hawaii at Manoa. But for UW, I also just want to get a bachelor's, at least start out with a bachelor's and see how much, how much more I can go from there.
Okay. And what sports do you play?
I play tennis and I do cross-country and I'm captain for both. Currently, I am in cross-country and I've been the girls' captain and I help make the post and I help with, we got a new coach this year. So I've been helping a lot with like just the whole environment of cross-country as a whole. And for tennis, I'm gonna be the captain this upcoming year, so that's very exciting. And I am a varsity hopefully singles player.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Uh, who is, who do you consider to be your biggest hero and why?
My dad. He's always been a huge inspiration to me because he's an immigrant from Mexico and he's like built our life. Like the reason why I have this opportunity to be here today is because of him. And also my mom, of course. But like my dad is like the one who works in our family and he's just a great inspiration to me because even though he's old and like has a broken knee, he still, he still works and he still does a lot for us. So I really appreciate him.
Right. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, I was sitting around a table uh, the other day with a number of women, eight actually, that were my age. And um, we were talking about when we were out of college, women at that age in the seventies were not even able to get a credit card without having a, a husband. Can you imagine that? How, how things have changed? You couldn't get a loan, you couldn't get a credit card. You had to have a husband. So, um, and then we were very limited as to the types of careers we could go into. Because not that we couldn't do the job, it's just that we wouldn't get hired. So you're very fortunate to be living in this, in this day and age, yes. So good luck with your architecture. I think you'll, you'll do wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for applying, Diana.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you very much, hon.
Thank you.
So the next person we're going to interview is Isabella Nguyen. I'm sorry, I don't know if I said that correctly. And Isabella, you're also from Decatur, correct?
Yes, I am. Okay. Um, my name is Isabella, but I go by Bella. I am a Vietnamese-American and I'm also a second generation. But I am the first in my family to pursue an education. I am a full-time running start student, so I am not actively at Decatur, but I do have one class there. At Highline, I am a writing tutor where I assist with international students and also students who have certain disabilities. And I am also a social media coordinator for cultural and inclusive diversity at Highline College. Outside of school, I uh, I volunteer at a hospice where I communicate with those who have lost their loved ones. And I am also a catechist slash youth leader at my local church school.
Thank you very, very much. So you would, you'd still be considered a senior, which you have on your application? By the way, you did a wonderful job on your application.
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember McDaniel?
I'll start off with the same question as usual. Favorite book and why?
Oh, that one's hard. It's been a minute since I read like a really good book, but the last time I read like a good, a good book, I guess, was It Ends With Us. Since I am, I'm always volunteering at a hospice and I see those who have lost their loved ones. It Ends With Us like makes me realize how valuable time is and how you can't take any moment for granted. It also tells you to make the most of things because in one of the series or chapters, it's a make-a-wish and their make-a-wish was to go around town and travel around the city for the last time before they would have to be, before their last time. So I think that really made me open my eyes that mm, tomorrow isn't promised and you have to make the most of it.
That's, that's a true statement. I just got back from a funeral not too long ago, so I, I, you're a hundred percent sure on that one. Uh, the second one's gonna be the one on the school. If there was something you could change about school. I know you go to Highline, so I've been to Highline quite a few times, so even using Highline or Decatur, what is something that you think the school should be able to do better and what would you like to change about it?
I definitely see a gap between Highline and Decatur. Highline, I feel like it's more diverse, whereas Decatur, although it also is diverse too, I feel like it could be more welcoming. Like the others have said about the gates, I feel like that brings a little more, I guess, a tightening feeling whenever you go there because it feels more prison-like and it feels like you're kind of trapped and isolated into one spot and you're not allowed to go anywhere. So I feel like Decatur should restrict having gates around their campus and allow students to be able to walk wherever and whenever you can.
Okay. And then I'm gonna uh, follow up with another question. Uh, you had written in here uh, that you had done a research paper on the ethnical dilemma of Starlink and Ukraine winter two thousand twenty-five. Can you give me a little bit of information on that and what was your findings and your feelings at the end of doing that report?
Yes. So my initial study was that there, I was trying to find a connection between Starlink satellite, which is ran by Elon Musk and how it targeted Ukraine because as one of the, it's one of the main communications for Ukraine since when the Ukraine and Russian conflict happened, Ukraine did not have any communication or network or satellites throughout the world. So S- Starlink had to give them some assistance. However, there were times where their communication was broken and there was disconnection. So Ukraine did not know when things were gonna happen and that's when conflicts with like satellites or bombing occurred. So I was trying to find a connection between how Ukraine sat, sorry. Starlink was actually in favor of the Russians instead of Ukraine. However, I could not find most information because since this is a new um, conflict and situation, it was hard to find valuable sources out of this. So I changed my hypothesis to what has Ukraine, Starlink contributed to Ukraine and what has it provided this instance, assistance?
Uh, at the end of it, do you feel that uh, knowing, after doing the research stuff, do you think Starlink should have stayed out? And if Starlink could have stayed out, do you think it would have been better or worse? Even though the conflict is still going on?
Can you repeat that question for me?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, knowing what you know now, uh, the concept of having, like you had mentioned, a non-governmental agency providing services to them, especially on the telecommunicational side, do you think they should have stayed out of the war completely?
I think it's hard to have a bias between what really happened because I am not a person who was in this conflict and I'm seeing this from an outside point of view. But I would say that it was, I guess, Starlink's Starlink should have gotten so much involvement if they weren't going to pro- sorry, going to, I don't know how to say this word. Emphasize with them rather than deteriorate them.
I can understand that. Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thanks. Uh, Bella, I'm a retired registered nurse and thank you for wanting to be a nurse. When you went to the UW nurse camp, was there anything that surprised you about what they, what they taught you about nursing?
Yeah, when I initially came into the nurse camp, I wanted to be a Peds nurse. But opening my eyes to different varieties that they had, they allowed us to shadow nurses and go through, go to hospitals. We went to UW Medicine and Northwest Hospital, I believe. And I opened my eyes to OR nursing and I saw how diverse and how interesting it was getting, doing PPE, closing up and then seeing surgeries and that really made me more to- tuned into OR nursing. And during nurse camp, we were allowed to interview nurses and we saw a bunch of variety of nurses and like their experience. And I felt that was very like very eye-opening and I really enjoyed communicating and learning more about what nursing really is.
Awesome, Bella. Good luck and um, I hope you find the perfect job one day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, Isabelle, how did you come up with your signature?
My signature?
Look, I'm looking at your application and it, how did you decide to make your signature look like that?
Honestly, I've never like practiced my signature, so I just do it randomly. So it's just like, it's different every time.
Okay, well.
It matches Starlink.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, uh, same question I asked the last young lady. Uh, who is your hero and why?
My mom. My mom's my strongest supporter. She's always been there for me through everything and without her, I don't know where I'd be.
Alright, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, as we, Bella, as we've told the rest of the applicants, we'll talk about this after the meeting and then we'll we'll, we'll have some commission interviews with the um, planning commission yet. And uh, then we'll make an appointment at the regular meeting, which will be starting at six thirty. You're welcome to stay or watch TV at channel twenty-one or come on back and, or watch, listen or get a phone call tomorrow. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Alright. Oh, by the way, Bella, uh, I know how crowded it is at Highline, how difficult it is to find parking. So December sixth, we'll have light rail taking you right to Highline.
Thank goodness.
Okay. Alright. So now we have two more interviews. We, we also have a executive session we have to get to, but we have two more interviews for the planning commission. Um, the first one on the list is Malin Barnes. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Thank you. Go ahead and just tell us a little bit about yourself and uh, why you would like to be on the commission and what you think you can do to help. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, uh, councilmembers, for your time. Uh, my name is Malin Barnes. You did pronounce it properly, so thank you for that. Um, I recently, I'd say within the last year, uh, moved to Federal Way and purchased my first home uh, over near Panther Lake. Um, and just living here and being a part of the community has been really inspiring. Um, and I've been tuning into city council meetings for that entire year through YouTube and just watching the streams. Um, and just hearing the conversations about rezoning and redeveloping the city from being a very like rural and unincorporated community into a thriving, very urban bustling city, uh, has been really cool. Uh, my dad was a civil engineer in the air force and so I kind of grew up playing city simulator games like SimCity two thousand and City Skylines and stuff like that. And so city development and civil engineering and urban development has been a passing hobby. Um, and so when I saw on Facebook this opportunity arose, uh, I was like, well, it would be cool to kind of see those things play out in real life. Um, I would point out that like last night's uh, city council meeting regarding the rezoning of the uh, operations and um, maintenance facility, the ONM facility for sound transit and how that was contradicting being a commercial property and need to be rezoned into industrial and the conversation about land use and sound ordinances and stuff like that. I mean, I was talking to my wife about it for like an hour after the meeting had adjourned because uh, it's just really interesting stuff to me. So I find it interesting and I feel like um, I can contribute a bit to it as an outsider, kind of as a new member of the community.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So let's see, maybe we could start from that end. And I bet you councilmember Doby might have it because he's the chair of our land use committee.
My question is, um, you put down on your uh, the application planning and arts. So if you had to pick one, which would it be?
It would be planning. Um, the arts one I saw also had an opening and so I just kind of went for a shotgun approach of see what sticks to the wall. Um, I was a music major in college. Uh, I was a performer, or a music education uh, major. Uh, I didn't finish the degree just because public education in this country isn't really a long-term career in my opinion. Um, it just isn't as supportive as it could be. But I do love the arts and I love the performance and I love the expression of it. Uh, my favorite installation in Federal Way is the High Five, um, over by the light rail station now. Um, but I would definitely choose the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Walsh?
Um, I, I'm glad you have such an exciting life that watching the, the meetings on Monday night last night was the, was the highlight. I mean, that's uh, anyway.
I, I had a newborn on the twenty-seventh, uh, born at Franciscan, so I've had a lot of free time with my paternity ring.
Alright. So, uh, what, what do you do professionally?
Uh, I'm enlisted in the Coast Guard right now. I'm an IT professional. Um, I've got another two years in before I get out. Uh, my wife is currently in the process of becoming a police officer with the Port of Seattle at Sea-Tac and the cruise terminals. Um, and then long-term, I'm looking to open a business, hopefully a restaurant of some kind here in Federal Way. Um, but actively, I'm active duty.
Alright, great then and good luck with the restaurant.
Thank you, sir.
Business as well. Go in with eyes open.
Yes.
What, with your music, you say you're in music performance?
Music education.
Music education. What, what, what is your music instrument?
So my primary was euphonium. It's like a tuba, but about half the length of it. And then my secondary was front horn. They're both conical bore instruments, which means they start smaller at the mouthpiece and then get larger to the bell. It was a lot of fun. I play all the brass instruments and I had to learn all the woodwind and percussion as well. But those were my primaries.
And why did you decide to live in Federal Way? Is that where you just found the best deal on a house? Or were you looking specifically at Federal Way?
So South King County was my preference. I love the diversity. When I first moved up here in 2023, I started renting in Renton, actually, up near Cascades. I don't know if you know where that's at, like Fairwood area. And I grew up in rural Oklahoma, rural New Mexico and rural Texas. And it's very white or Hispanic. And so moving to a place that has such a culturally diverse population was really eye-opening. And so when I was working with my realtor, I was very specific. Like I do not want to live up in the northern suburbs where it's very homogenous. I want to live somewhere where there's more culture and more diversity. And so when I came to Federal Way, I actually had a dermatology appointment here before I purchased. And I just, when I saw a property come up over where I live now, it was a no-brainer to pick it up.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Congratulations on the birth of your, your baby. Or your girl.
Baby girl, baby Hazel.
Oh, what a beautiful name, congratulations.
Thank you.
So what is a hobbyist civil engineer?
I put hobbyist civil engineer because I have no formal training or background or education in civil engineering. Hobbyist just meaning I like reading C codes and ordinances. I like learning about how levels of zoning works. You know, you've got heavy industry versus light industry. You've got rural zoning that you may have commercial in a rural area and commercial in an urban area, and they function completely differently. So it's kind of like when I'm killing time at work, I'm just reading really boring documents about how land law, like use gets chosen.
Okay, and you're in the Coast Guard?
Yes, ma'am.
So where do you go to work at?
The base is in downtown Seattle on Alaskan Way. So if you know where the baseball stadium and the parking lot is, it's on the waterfront right there.
How many folks serve there?
Ooh, I think there's like 500 active members plus civilian staff who are stationed at that unit. There's also the cutters, the boats that are stationed there, which have their own people on them, but they're not part of the base. So it's a lot.
Well, thank you for your service and congratulations on your new home and your baby.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember McDaniel.
They've answered a lot, asked a lot of the questions I would've had. I, I can't help but laugh a little bit about the fact you watched the LUTC and your, your thought processes make me smile. And I'm sure I'm watching Keith over here, it's right interesting. I will ask though, because you did have arts on there and I've been some arts ones, you would be a great fit for arts too.
Sure, thank you.
So, but do you, do you really strongly feel that, because I'll be honest, we have one vacancy for this one, we have two people out. And knowing that your personality and stuff might be quite interesting on the arts side too, I would really like you to think maybe about the arts one as being one that you could try out too. Otherwise, I think you're gonna fit in really, really great here, Bill, no matter which one you get into. So, hey, thank you for filling out and giving us something to talk about.
Absolutely.
And the fact that you watched the LUTC, just, that would be the biggest thing for me tonight. I'm gonna just walk away with.
And not that you asked it, but my favorite book is The Alchemist by Paulo Coelho.
What was it?
The Alchemist by Paulo Coelho. It's, it's a translated piece, but it's about self-journey and self-identity. And when my frontal lobe kind of came into being when I turned 25, I found that book resonated with a lot of things I was coming to terms with. So it's a good read if you haven't had it.
I've not read that one yet, but it's funny because sometimes we'll do these youth ones and an adult will get up and just answer that question, even if I haven't asked it. But I do appreciate it because it's quite interesting when you ask the youth. A lot of them will read the same book or they have the same kind of topic. But the youth we get in here are not the normals, it seems like. And some of the books they've read have blown me away. And I usually listen to almost every book that they've recommended. So it's, it's, it's nice to see what they're, what they're into and what they're listening to.
I'm glad they're still reading The Mockingbird. I'm glad that that's still, people read that still.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah.
I grew up reading that in school, so.
Yeah. Again, thank you for coming in tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The Arts Commission meets in the daytime, in the morning? If you were interested in that, would you be able to do that?
Would be on a case-by-case basis, honestly.
It's once a month, but on a Thursday morning?
Oh, that, if it was once a month, that would be potentially, yes.
All right, thanks.
So what is your position in the Coast Guard?
I'm an IT, so help desk, kind of you think when you call somebody and they tell you to turn the computer off and back on again, that's me on the other side. I do installation, I do a lot of network management. It's very like customer service focused. I don't really get to take apart computers as much anymore. There's been some changes in how they handle that in the Coast Guard. But I don't know, I always tore up computers when I was a little kid and I loved, my first computer was a Windows 95 machine, so it was a no-brainer when I enlisted.
You know, I went into Home Depot one time to buy some paint. And a young man, probably 18 maybe, said, I know you. And I said, oh, well, yeah, how? And he said, I watch you on Channel 21. You need a life. You notice how many bald guys we've got? They pull their hair out. Anyway, but thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been very interesting, thank you. So just like with the other young folks we talked about, we'll talk at the end of this meeting and then we'll appoint at the next meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Okay, and finally, we have John Fife. Any relation to the city of?
Yes, but I receive no tax benefits. And I must apologize about my application. I was in a business meeting and one of the members of volunteer committee meetings said, hey, you should do this. And so I had very limited time, so you got one-word answers, so.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself. How are you related to the city?
If you study the history of Fife, that swampy area down there was actually owned by the Pu'alip tribe. And the Coast Guard had a station there right around the turn of the century. And there was a Captain Fife that treated the natives very, very well. And so they named that area in recognition of Captain Fife.
And he's related to you?
Yes.
Wow, how wonderful.
Yeah.
Goodness, well, thank you very much for that. Walked down memory lane, it's interesting.
Yeah, I should run for mayor, eh?
Well, yeah. Fife. Okay, well, council, do you have any, McDonald, do you have some questions?
Yeah, first one's gonna be, it says business owner 40 years. What actually do you do for business? And are you, you still in business or retired, or what's your game?
No, I've been in business 42 years. We run a van shuttle service for the maritime industry. So anytime these big ships that you see come into any of the ports in the state of Washington along Columbia River, we're the service that provides the transportation from Sea-Tac to the ship or from the ship to Sea-Tac, provided the clearing obligations through Customs and Border Protection. When the ship's in port, we also would pick up crew persons that need to go to doctor or dentist appointments. So basically, we specialize in the ground transportation for that industry. And it may be movement of technicians or superintendents, that type of thing.
Gotcha. And then what made you pick planning of all the options?
I'll tell you the exact reason why is the mayor invited all of us that were down by, I, I can't remember how he geographically divided it up. But I live down by the Twin Lakes area. And he came in and kind of did a broad overview. And I shared with him, and I'll share with you, is because I deal with people from around the world on a daily basis, one of the things that I look for, for the good of my clients, is what city is going to provide a place where those crew persons on their off-time waiting to go to the airport, get a hotel that'll feed them at the hotel, or they can walk to stuff. And bar none, Federal Way is the best city for my business to conduct business because everything that they could want is within walking distance. So in my opinion, this is a well-planned, well-laid-out city. And so I thought that would be interesting to be a part of it.
Gotcha. Now, with the renovations that we've been doing in downtown for the last decade or two, do you feel that walkability can be improved still? Or do you feel like it's got a decent walkability at the moment?
No, I, I rate it highly, walkability. You have a great business core. You have parks and recreation right there at the core of it. You now have a major transportation hub coming in with light rail. In my mind, Federal Way, I mean, I don't even think Bellevue can compete. One, the people I deal with don't have tons of money. So they're looking for economical type of things. So it's a, it's an interesting city in the way that it's laid out. And we don't go any other places. When I deal with international clients and they say, where do we take these people? I always tell them, we take them to Federal Way. And I have a core reason for doing that because of the services.
Well, that's, that's actually very interesting. I appreciate you bringing that up to us and our attention. Thanks for showing up today, ma'am.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Thanks for applying and for being here tonight. So do they stay in our hotels when they're here?
Oh, yes.
So about how long is their average stay?
Typically, what'll happen is they'll come off of a ship about midday and then they'll fly out internationally the following day. So they come off the ship, they go to a hotel. And then, you know, we have to kind of nurse them along, make sure that they're getting fed. And then we tell them, you know, if you want to go to a movie, there's the mall. If you want to go and buy electronics, which they're really keen to do, there's Best Buy. I mean, and it used to be, sad to hear Walmart's closed down, but they're very keen on Walmart. They could walk to Walmart. I mean, restaurants, if you don't want to eat here, that's another thing. I had interaction with people down in the, the Port of Portland and also Vancouver. And their remark was, this city has amazing restaurants. I've never seen a diversity of so many restaurants in a core area. So that was something that opened my eyes, is that, yeah, we kind of do.
So do you pick these people up from the cruise ships? Is that what you do?
Oil tankers.
Oh, okay.
Any type of shipping, we, we have done cruise ships, but not passengers. We deal strictly with the crew members that are working on ships. So they're an interesting field in themselves, the cruise line. So we used to do heavily all of that. We're not doing very much of it now just because of differences of price points and that type of thing.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, hey, John, thanks for applying. And for the rest of you, I've known John for close to 40 years, probably. And, and I can vouch for his good common sense and integrity and everything as well. I think that what you just said about Federal Way, we need to share with Meredith. Our.
Yeah, I mean, if you go on YouTube, which I do, you know, there's these folks that want to tell you the best 10 blessed places to live in Washington. And I was shocked of the cities they listed and they didn't list Federal Way. But they're looking at it from a different viewpoint. I'm looking at it for, you know, like you've got soccer people coming in. You've got, you know, the tournaments that come in. And it, it's a remarkable place. If you're, if you have to be walking and going someplace, you can get to anything you need in the city.
Great.
Yeah, and pretty soon you're gonna get on light rail and go to the airport.
Exactly.
What did you ask for?
Yeah, what we're going to be using that too, is as a branch, so to say, of what we do, is there's times when we can't provide ground transportation or like the current situation with our freeways, is we'll just put them on, you know, we'll just take them over there and get them on light rail and say, there you go.
Thank goodness.
All right, John, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
I, I want to find out if councilman, is it Tron? Am I saying that right?
Tran.
Tran. Go ahead, ask me some questions. We haven't heard from you all night, so I'm just hoping that you'll, that you'll jump in there.
I only ask if I, I only ask if I really, really, you know, have interesting questions, but.
Okay, so what you're saying is I'm pretty boring, okay.
No, no. I didn't mean it that way.
We just hadn't heard from you, councilman, so.
But I, I really appreciate the perspective that you share about the cruise ship. Because I cruise quite a bit. I know that you don't deal with the passenger, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it wasn't so far away from the ports, we would be hyping Federal Way completely just because as, as a tourist, you know, you're looking for, well, do I have to rent a car? Do I have to have that expense, or can I walk? And this city is really good for that.
Well, thank you for that information and thank you for applying.
You know.
Thank you, it's good to hear from you. We did, we haven't heard your voice all night, so.
I usually don't talk, but.
Well, we want to hear you.
Thank you, sir.
The Port of Portland, it's kind of interesting. I grew up in Portland.
Oh.
And I had to go visit relatives a little while ago. And I asked my sister-in-law, you know, where could I stay in downtown Portland? And she said to me, would I, to me, would I stay in downtown Seattle? And I said, no way. And she said, well, same with Portland, no way.
Yeah, sadly, even the hotels that are now close to the airport have such a problem with some of our, their fellow citizens that we no longer will take anyone to any of the hotels that are right near the airport. All of our business is being conducted in Vancouver, Washington, in what I would consider a safe place.
Exactly, right. I went to Beaverton, but Vancouver's good. You know, and councilmember Doby, another thing to tell our economic development.
I don't really have a question about land use. I do have a question of, how many different individuals do you actually bring to Federal Way to stay on a monthly basis? Every day? I mean, are we talking a market of 40 to 60 different bed nights in a month? Or how, how big is that market?
It's probably about that, yeah. I mean, on some occasions, like today, we probably have three or four crewmen that will, are coming off of ships, Port Seattle, Port Tacoma, that will go to, we, we have a great working relationship with La Quinta Hotel. The problem with hotels is because of COVID, is most of the in-house restaurants, they shut down. So we have a working relationship with them that they'll make sure that these crewmen get lunch, breakfast, lunch and dinner.
So, so you do this as a business?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming there's other businesses that do the same thing, out of cruise ship? I mean freighters that come through to Tacoma and things like that?
I have one other competitor.
One other competitor? Maybe we should put packages together so that they, you know, stay asleep and eat and be known as the place everybody wants to.
Yeah, and if you're calling my office, they are, they almost in a way don't have a choice. Because we handle that end of the business. We say, this is where you're gonna go because we know how the system works. And we developed the system so that they stay in Federal Way, they shop in Federal Way, they do all that.
You're the tour guide, we like that.
Well, thank you very much, John.
You're welcome.
How is Council Fife related to you?
Third cousin, twice removed, six times over. I, I, I have read the history a little bit. And so there's two Fife lines that come out of Scotland. And the one Fife line that I come out of, there's some type of indirect, yeah. You're welcome. Can I just ask a question? Do I have to hang out anymore, or can I turn and burn for home?
Go, go home and have dinner.
Oh, don't call us, we'll call, okay, got it. Thank you.
Would you please turn your mic on? Thank you.
We have a lot of openings on the Youth Commission.
So the two girls are seniors?
Yeah.
And I would.
Okay, let's go, wait, hold on, let me get the two girls' names. We got Diana.
Isabel.
And Is, and Bella. Yeah, thank you.
But I would, if we could, I don't know where that is. Oh, let's see, okay, so.
Montage.
One has to be alternate.
Yeah, one has to be, one of the four has to be an alternate. But I would put the girls both as, as voting because.
Five, six?
Yeah, because they're seniors and they have limited time with us.
Okay.
And, and the boys, I, you know, they, they're both really awesome. But whoever becomes a. And the boys, I, you know, they're both really awesome, but whoever becomes an alternate would just move up to a voting member.
Sure. Did I hear Lydia's voice?
Yes, she's online.
Oh, Lydia, I'm so sorry, I didn't know you were still on. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, okay, I had it the other way around, Susan, but I'm okay with the way you thought because I'm always concerned about losing them after a year and trying to replace the senior with new applicants. So that's my only concern with your suggestion. And so I had it the other way around. And I had Isabella as an alternate and Diane as a voting member.
Okay, let's see, let's ask, so you've got alternate for Isabella and Diana as board. Okay, let's ask Councilmember McDaniel, we'll be sure to get preference here.
I was going to originally go with the same thing of having the seniors on board. Isabel, like she said, she is part of Decatur, but she spends most of her time at Running Start, so I would actually go with Councilmember Sephar Dawson with the two males and Diana for the voters and then Isabella for the alternate.
So we've got Isabella twice as the alternate and the two males as the board. Go ahead, Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah, I agree.
With McDaniel.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. And Councilmember Walsh?
I was almost inclined to put, you know, I think that Jaden should definitely be a voting. With Justin, we can either put him as a voting or as an alternate with the expiration of 2027, either one. I mean, all four of them were great choices. I think the others stood up a little bit more than what, than what Justin did. But all four of them were, I mean, they're going to be great contributors. But I can go along with whatever, whatever the rest of you.
Councilmember Tran.
Well, my opinion is that I agree with Councilmember Honda to put Diana and Bella as a voting members and the two boys as the alternate.
Okay.
Well, we have three, three voting member options.
Okay.
So Lydia, what is your preference? Because you said you were good either way.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go with, again, it's just replacing members, especially the youth commission is very difficult. So I, I'm not going to go against what the, what the majority says, but.
They would just move up to a voting, whoever it was, if it was Justin, just move him up.
Okay, so let's have Diana as position five and Bella as position six. Is that correct?
So, you know, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't believe putting Isabella as a voting is probably the right thing to do.
Because she's in Highline.
An alternate, because the other three are all connected in one school. So you're going to get some synergies potentially. And Isabel is going to Highline, which is great. And she'll, my guess is she'll participate, but I think we get more citywide things happening if we have three kids in a school that are all worried about being locked down and talking, whatever they talk about.
And they're all on the same boards, the same committees, which means they can pull more kids in, too.
Yeah, so that's the only reason I would say Isabelle's the alternate instead of the voting.
Okay, so let's, so.
I would think that there's probably a good portion of our high school kids at Highline that she can communicate with. So, because they're still in high school at Highline, I mean.
I tend to agree with Susan on that one, that the Running Start, I don't think in the past, we've had too many Running Start kids on the youth commission, but Running Start is a significant number of our youth, our Running Start. I know with my own kids, four of my five kids did Running Start and so.
I like that.
So the, I'm sorry.
And with not, with voting, if you don't have a majority, does the, the alternate doesn't get to move up or do they, what, I'm sorry, I forgot the formula there? Um, so she, you know, the person who's there can sit there, talk about what they need, but at some point, when it comes to voting, if they don't have, wait.
Wait, no, we changed that, Lydia, last year or the year before, where if there's not a quorum, that the voting, that the alternate gets to move up to be a voting member?
Right. So in that case, she can still vote if she was an alternate, but other, yeah, okay. I mean, I still want to stick by what I said, but I will not, I'm not 100%, I'm not opposed to having her as a voting member.
Okay, I'm, how about if we have Diana, Jaden and Justin as the voting members and Bella? Oh, wait, no, Diana, pick Justin or Jaden, which do you want, Justin or Jaden?
Jaden for voting.
Jaden as the voting number.
Jaden as the voting. Okay, and then Bella as the voting, along with Diana? Diana, Jaden and Bella voting? And then we'll have Justin as the alternate. How does that sound?
Let's have him as alternate number two, since he's a junior, alternate number two, which term expires in 2027.
All right, so let me repeat, Diana, Jaden and Bella, five, six and seven, doesn't matter because they're all the same length of time. And then Justin as number two, alternate number two for the longer. All okay? Why do you want?
I'm for that.
Council President, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes, sir.
So the regular council meeting starts in 15 minutes and we have an executive session. So this is on the regular council agenda. If you need more time to discuss this, if you do it at the meeting.
Can we do the, can we do the land use after the meeting like we usually always do? I mean, we could, the executive session doesn't have to be now, does it? Could it be at the end?
It's unfortunately not noted for the next meeting, so we need to.
Yeah, I think we've got it, actually. Are we good with?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.